In a quorum present, I call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. The Board would like to welcome the audience and thank you for attending. Viewers may watch Board of Education meetings and Board Committee meetings live at tcaps.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Before we get started, I just want to welcome our newest Board member, Sarah Vajeras. So, thank you, thank you, and again, thank you to all the candidates that applied, but we're really excited to have you serve with us. Yes, okay, so we'll move right into our Pledge of Allegiance. So, please rise and join Mrs. Ms. Gugamo, 2nd grade class from Long Lake, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are at the review approval portion of the agenda. Are there any motions or any changes?
Yes, I would like to add two agenda items for discussion tonight. One would be preparation for our strategic planning session number two, and that would be added as 9F as in Frank. And then, secondly, designating TCAP's Electoral Representative 2 North Ed for their election coming up in June. That would be item number 9G.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? So, we have to take a vote, right? Do we vote on that? Yeah, we have to take a vote. Okay, so, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed say nay. Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is recognition. I'll defer to Dr. Van Wagner.
Okay, so, tonight, and we'll really do this mostly individually, a little bit farther in the agenda, but we are recognizing our 24, 25 retirees. We have quite a large class of retirees or staff that are finally graduating from our district and just a phenomenal group of people, lots of service and dedication to the kids here in Traverse City. And so, we are going to take the time to recognize each one of them individually, to call their name out. We will also be having a retiree ceremony where we recognize our retirees. So, we will be having that here coming up a couple of weeks.
May 29th.
May 29th. So, we'll celebrate them and thank them for their service tonight and at that opportunity, so.
Perfect, and we'll read those individuals later, later in the board meeting. Okay, we will move on. So, the Board has set aside this time for public comment. Individuals addressing the Board shall have one opportunity to speak during public comment and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system. We strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 2504. Tammy, do we have public comment?
We do. Scott Richards.
Scott Richards, Green Day, "Countdown." I'm glad to see a couple of new Board members. So, I'm gonna repeat the story that I've said before. The best thing I've ever learned in my life was sugar time. Sugar time was time with my grandparents, early in the war. As grandkids, we'd be together. We'd read a short devotional, which is a couple Bible verses. And then, we'd read the Bible. And then, we'd get up and hug each other and kiss each other. And it's the best way to start it. I'm just telling you, it's the best thing I've learned in my life. Second thing is, freedom of religion is in the First Amendment because our God, King, and Lord are others. Such wisdom, because they just saw 2,000 years of fighting, okay? Like, if you were in England and you were under George, King George, and you belonged to the Church of England, you were kicked out. They took your homes. But, say, you became a prince, and if you were a citizen in a Catholic country, you were kicked out of that country. So, that's why all these pilgrims that came here, the Juritans, they wanted freedom of religion. It wasn't state, it wasn't religion, they, they just didn't want one state, the United States of America, saying, "You got to belong to this church." That's why freedom of religion is in there. We should have religion in our country and in our children's schools. Matter of fact, the Bible was the first textbook in America. And people read the Bible. Maybe you guys should look up the story of Jordan, of Marquette, Michigan. Jordan Dumey, sad story. I was wondering if you read these books, like Red, White, and Royal Blue, or Queer, Gender Queer, or All Boys Aren't Blue? I wonder if he looked at dumb books and led to his demise. I don't think these books should be in the schools. If they want to be 18-years-old and look at dumb books, that's fine with me. But, we do not need to clue young people's minds because they got the comfort of looking home. They have a lot of confusion going on. And at the same time, showing books like this, I think you better mention this.
Next, we have Sebastian Easton Ellison.
I'm Sebastian Ellison, a senior at Traverse City West. I've spoken here before about the harassment and threats I have received as my time as a student here at TCAP. However, that doesn't mean the harassment has stopped. Just today, as I was walking to my car with a friend so we can go to CTC, another car full of students also on the way to CTC pulled up, started yelling "slurs" at me, called us faggots, and proceeded to drive off. Not only that, just a couple of weeks ago, my car was targeted in the parking lot with "slurs" written in the dust outside of, on the side of it. Again, I need to stress, I am not confused. We are not confused. We know who we are. From the time I last spoke, I've begun working with different political and news organizations. And to stress that fact, I support those. I support those like me. And TCAP should support those like me who have experienced hate crimes. And that's why I'm also in support of some of these books we have in our libraries, as students need to be educated on all sides, all points of view, all identities. Removing books is not the way to do that. We need to teach our kids about all religions, not just one. That's why our country doesn't have a state religion, because all people should be able to practice how they want. One of the programs that supports this is the arts here in TCAP, and to be able to freely express themselves and feel safe. This is why I've been a part of our choir program for the past eight years. And that's why it's so disheartening to know that despite improvements to our music facilities, being one of the main advertising points of the last bond proposal, one of the curricular, the curricular, the one curricular program myself and other students feel safe in and supported is not getting what need, what we need to keep going. West Middle School is just one of the most in need of improvements, with 75-plus students a class next year in the choir program. Yet, they've only received 1% of the bond money that voters had the impression was going to support our music programs. Again, we are not, again, we are not get, we are not getting what is needed when the choir, when the choir program I am a part of at West High School can barely afford sheet music for us to learn, while at the same time, TCAP has three ensembles, two from West, one from Central, performing at the MSVMA All-State Festival last Friday, one of which being top 10 in the state. Again, I'm here because of all the board, not only for desire to support these programs, but also the desire and need of the students to support them and experience them as well. Thank you.
Sarah Peat.
So, in honor of Teen Pregnancy Prevention and Awareness Month, TCAP is hopefully signing a proclamation that will be at your discussion later tonight. I am the Program Director for Generations Ahead. We're a small nonprofit in the region that supports teen parents, both moms and dads. I am here tonight to promote this resolution in recognition of one of our more vulnerable populations, teen parents. Over the past five years, there have been 141 births to teen parents in this region in the three counties that TCAP serves. That's Grand Traverse, Benzie, and Lelandon. Teen parents face a number of unique and complicated challenges as they navigate the journey of parenthood while still facing adolescence. They are at an increased risk for numerous detrimental outcomes, specifically regarding their education. Teen moms who get pregnant while in high school have only a 50% chance of graduating from high school before the age of 22. Teen fathers have a 30% lower chance of graduating than their peers. And just 2% of teen moms have graduated from college, or even attend college, I should say. Teen parents are also more likely to live in poverty, have poor health outcomes for themselves and for their babies. And many face mental health challenges, including depression and severe anxiety. Their babies also face significant challenges and should be a concern of everyone in our community, including starting at kindergarten. At Generations Ahead, we believe that empowering young parents while they are still teens help them overcome these obstacles. With guidance and a supportive community like ours, these young parents will become more resilient and be able to live thriving, independent lives. Thank you for your ongoing support as the school district, as the Board of Education, and also serving our students in our community, many of here, many of who are here tonight, but no matter the needs in the situation. Thank you.
Mike Grillo.
Good evening. I wanted to take a moment to send a big thank you to the Board and to staff for a fantastic job on the Innovation and Manufacturing Centers. It's been a real privilege to be part of the process since the outset and to imagine what, what these were going to be like. And a few weeks ago, had the opportunity to, I unfortunately missed the open houses at the two facilities due to conflict, but I had the chance to attend manufacturers in the Central Center. And what a wow moment, oh my goodness. These are incredible resources for the entire community. It was so exciting to hear some of the robotics teams talking about how they're using the spaces, how other teams outside of TCAP are using the spaces. This is a regional center, not just for our students, but more importantly, to hear from educators from West and Central, from the middle schools, the high schools, about STEM program, all the things that are happening in STEM programming, exciting things that are coming down the line. And it was just, it was just a fantastic moment, and I just want to say a big thank you. On a personal note, I became a grandfather for the first time in January. And it just occurred to me last night, as I was looking through the agenda and preparing for this evening, it occurred to me that, you know, my goodness, my grandson is probably going to end up attending TCAP and might actually have the opportunity to utilize those, be part of those spaces as well. And so, it was, it was really a different perspective and a really appreciative perspective. And so, I just wanted to say thank you. Fantastic job. Really looking forward to see where everything goes next. Thank you.
Damian Ganyan.
Hello, members of the Board. My name is Damian Ganyan, and I'm a senior at Traverse City West Senior High. I want to be talking about how I feel lost in the school system. I'm a trans student, and I can't begin to describe how it feels hearing my dead name announced to the class. I have tried so hard to keep that name hidden from the world, and I'm sure other students feel the same. It hurts so much to hear that name because I've been going by a different name for so long. And I hate being reminded of everything that has happened in my past with that name. I had to get a form signed by my parents to just change my name in the system so that my preferred name could be in the school yearbook, even though I've been going by my preferred name at school all my high school career. I know that there are other students at our schools that feel the same, but might not have that support that their parents, that my parents have given me. And it's not fair to have those students who try so hard to have their preferred names hidden to have to show the world that their preferred name is what it is instead of the name that they've been going by for many years.
Bill Weisner.
Sorry, I should have had that ready. Bill Weisner, Traverse City. And I just want to, this handout I gave out is Potential Variables Creating Same-Sex Attraction. So, it's appropriate for a few of the comments that have been made. Here's a book, oh, by the way, this is a new sign. Hopefully, it'll be, it's, I got them from Ohio. It's celebrating our American tradition, Natural Family Strong. NaturalFamilyStrong.com. Hopefully, they'll be around because who doesn't want to, you know, same-sex parents, you know, you try to do what you can, but each same-sex parent, marriage is by design leaving out either a mom or a dad. Ideal, it's American tradition, it's one man, one woman. It's not to say, it's not to say anything else, it's, it's just the best. Everybody wants a mom and a dad who are loving, and that relationship stays together forever. You've got 500 books at TC West promoting homosexuality. Not one on the other side. Here's a good one to start with, Rich's Home. It's a kid's book, but this handout, Potential Variables Creating Same-Sex Attraction, a lot of them occurred to Rich in this storybook. And you've got books in four of the great schools that have, are promoting homosexuality. I urge you, I expect you to get the other side presented. And this one shows, these are commonsense things that occur in families. Heredity, unresolved family issues, temperament, hypersensitive, heterosexual, hetero-emotional wounds, over-attachment to opposite-sex parents, homo-emotional wounds, lack of attachment to same-sex parents. Parents, I mean, there's a whole bunch of them this year, and they all make sense to me. Sibling wounds, bullied by your family's oftentimes older siblings. Body image, shorter, taller, heavier, thinner. Sexual abuse is a big one, which can cause homosexual imprinting if you're sexually abused at a young age. And it just happens. You don't choose it, but it's there. And social people, or emotion, or social or peer wounds, by name-calling, I'm against all of that. The people that are identified this way need affirmation in a loving way. They don't need any bullying. And so, the list, please check them out. I'll be speaking about these songs too, a therapist guide. This should be in the high school. You're withholding the books on the other side from kids. And being gay, that's another one. Don't withhold these from the kids. Let them see these books in your libraries. Thank you.
Let's say end of public comment. Okay, we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Van Wagner?
Okay, legislative update, not a lot. We are waiting, this Friday is the consensus revenue hearing, which the state Senate Fiscal, House Fiscal, the Treasurer of the State of Michigan, work with economic professionals from the University of Michigan, Wayne State, Michigan State, and they come up with what they think the revenues will be for this next coming fiscal year. Today, I heard an interesting thing that for the first time ever, they are talking about an additional June consensus revenue conference now. Because of the way tariffs are and not knowing the federal money and where it's at, that they may want to take a closer look. Unfortunately, the word is, if they decide to do that, they may not have the budget then done until September. So, a lot of question marks, probably even more after my update this morning with our legislative liaison just in Lansing. So, we'll kind of see where that lands. We are hoping still for this week, more likely maybe next week, to see a House version at least. And from that point, we're going to have to take whatever the House version, the Senate Governors, even though they may be far off, and we're going to have to build a budget that we bring to the Board. So, that will be at our next board meeting. We will bring you our best guests from everything we think's there for a 20, 25, 26 budget. So, be prepared that we may not have all the pieces of the puzzle, so.
Can I just ask?
Yeah.
So, they're not statutorily required to have?
They're not statutory. There's, there is a, there was a bill passed, but it's, it is in statute, but it's not in the Constitution. So, there's no violation, there's no penalty if they don't meet that July 1 date. So, the Speaker, honestly, and the rhetoric over the last 48 hours has changed the tune of, we don't have to. So, I don't know, I don't know. Roads are in the mix, you know, still, and a change, and how schools are funded to take some of that to be able to do a $3 billion road package. So, we just have no idea right now where it is. So, just be prepared, we're gonna bring you the very best thoughts that we can. Hopefully, we will have the House version for next month. And district highlights, East and West Middle Schools hosted a very successful career day when members of the community came in to share the many different career options in Northwest, Northern Michigan and beyond. Ms. Page Paul and Mr. Tac Ready and their students at both Central and West High School have been a part of their AP classes and congressional hearings and debates to mimic what our government does. Students are learning in real time how to interact and listen on issues and how to do so in a proper governmental debate. I heard today that Tac, I think, has the kids in the new I O Cs and doing a Supreme Court version. Joe told me this, this afternoon. So, utilizing that facility for lots of things. And so, appreciate their work, always great work in both of their AP courses. As was mentioned before, the ribbon cuttings were held at West Senior High and Central High School for the Innovation and Manufacturing Centers. We've already had other schools come and take visits and want to talk with our team on what that looks like. And we have more coming. So, again, thank you to all those that have participated in all those showings, staff, students, everybody. I know both schools are very excited to be in the new space and already getting great use. The TC Titans did roll into Houston with the goal being to select in the playoffs. The robot worked flawlessly, and the drive team put up incredible numbers despite one of the toughest schedules on the field. They had the best showing in the history of the team, which placed 145 out of 3,500 robots worldwide and 18th in the State of Michigan out of 525 teams. So, and I know they're even more excited for next year. Traverse City West High School Academic Weapons. Traverse City West, they said High School Academic Weapons. So, that's Ryan Goodrich, Dylan Greglowski, they said that right?
Got it.
All right. Trey Storey and Tucker Ballinger, along with Coach Dan Rosenberg, competed in the Academic World Quest National Competition in Washington DC on April 27 through the 29th, after winning the regional competition in February. The team and the trip were sponsored by the International Affairs Forum at NMC. TCAP would like to thank the International Affairs Forum at NMC for sponsoring the regional competition for Academic World Quest and funding for the trip to DC. It was a great experience for those students. The competition took place Monday afternoon, and the team finished 32nd in the country. Trip highlights included exploring the National Mall, various memorials in the Smithsonian museums, presentations from people involved in foreign affairs, including those from the State Department and White House National Security Team, a dinner reception sponsored by Mexico highlighted by a speech by the Mexican Ambassador to the US. Tuesday highlights included a trip to the Embassy of the United Arab Emirates, where several embassy staff presented their roles and took questions from students about the UAE and its relations with the USA, followed by a trip to Capitol Hill and meeting with Michigan Senator Alyssa Slotkin, National Security Advisor, who visited with her, with the team, answering questions about her roles and the various national security issues that are happening today. So, great experience. Central Grade School had a great book giveaway the week of April the 7th. Students were given the opportunity to choose a book to keep. The books were acquired mostly through donations, and some were retired from the library collection. Thanks to Central Grade School's Mrs. Shrock and her son Oliver for organizing the event. English Learner Program staff hosted a breakfast for Traverse Heights Elementary School families. English Learner Program staff hosted a breakfast for Traverse Heights Elementary School families to hear about their child's learning and English progress. Parents, students and staff enjoyed breakfast together and students were able to check out a book to take home. The books were purchased through a grant from the TCAS Ukrainian Library. After the breakfast, parents joined the students at their weekly all-school house assembly in the gymnasium, where Mr. K pointed out their superpower of multilingualism. Special thanks to the District E L Program staff and interpreters D.B. Craig and Alicia Power for attending to assist families with communication. So lots of other things happening across the district. Just kids are frantically finishing up AP exams all over. Lots of sports are getting towards the end, just lots of great activities that, that are happening. As we know, word ceremonies are getting ready to start and not all that far from graduation. So great time of year, great time to celebrate kids and everything they're doing. And if you get the chance of all the things we have, we would love to have everybody in our community and our board come out and be able to wish our seniors a goodbye as they have achieved so many great opportunities and so many great accolades with that attempt.
That's a good thing. Thanks for that. All right, we'll move into our board committee reports. So first off will be our curriculum committee that occurred on April twenty-ninth, report out by Secretary Ballinger.
Okay, yeah, so we did not have public comments. There was one change to our meeting minutes from April first to reflect that the full committee recommended that the board keep information on student attendance and absenteeism and particularly chronic absenteeism in mind with our strategic planning. There were no changes or additions to our district course catalog, but it is on the consent calendar tonight to be consistent with our practice even when no changes are made. And we also just changed our date, August twenty, for August twenty-sixth meeting from a Tuesday to a Monday, just to accommodate some scheduling conflicts. And then going forward, we're thinking that our start time will be eight-thirty AM. But, you know, if we have an addition of a new trustee, then we will, we can revisit that if that's not a good time for all. We had a, we approved for consent calendar, the West Senior High School's German Exchange Partnership Field Trip to Germany next summer, June eighteenth to July tenth for up to fifteen students. And then the focus really of our, our meeting on April twenty-ninth was the learning series from Dan Tysworth and Jesse Houghton, where they presented to us some preliminary thoughts that they're gathering from teachers and principals on all the different assessments that we give students. So NWEA, MSTOP, PSAT, SAT, Ames, ELA math and science. You know, our kids, of course, do take a number of national and state tests, standardized tests. The benefit to the district, of course, is at the school level, the teacher level, and as a district, you know, this is used for ongoing interventions and, and student growth. But of course, the downside for the teachers is, and for the kids, is just a lot of testing. And we've heard from parents over the years as well. So the, the district's just trying to juggle, you know, what's hitting the right mark in terms of which tests give us which outcomes and staggering them and so on. So the ideas are going to come back in the summer after getting more input from teachers and building administrators and present again to us about their plans moving forward. And then lastly, we just had a brief conversation about strategic planning. As you all know, we had our first session April twenty-eighth, I believe it was, and then, and our next session is scheduled for June sixteenth. So that was pretty much it, and we adjourned at three forty-nine. Our next board curriculum committee meeting will be Tuesday, May twenty-seventh at eight-thirty AM in this building. That's it.
Okay, next, Board Finance Committee, which occurred on May first, Trustee Hardy.
Well, I will not belabor the items that were included in consent, but we did approve three items to send on, unanimously approved to send on to the board on the consent calendar. We, the Vex Robotic Program, some STEM equipment, we asked that it be purchased through a grant that we have. So that's funded by the First Robotics Grant Program. We also had a cell booster system that we approved for West, I believe. Yeah, West Senior High.
Facilities and transportation.
Facilities and transportation, thank you. You can correct me whenever I. And then we also had a staff laptop purchase that we approved on and sent on to the board for approval. It was unanimously approved and it's the beginning of some outdated equipment that we have that needs to be replaced. We got a nice update on Capitol Projects. I won't belabor that without video because it's nice to see it rather than hear about it. And then we also discussed briefly the difficulty of trying to approve a budget when we don't know what the revenue stream is going to be, but it seems to be an ongoing problem with public education in the state of Michigan that we have to go, have to guess sometimes and then build a fiscal plan based on that. So, but that's been going on for years. Then we had a quick update on some upcoming district purchases. And we adjourned. And the next meeting is, I'm looking here. I believe it's the first of June, if I remember.
Thursday, May twenty-ninth.
May twenty-ninth, okay. There, I see it. Thank you.
All right, I will report out on the Board Executive Committee. We had some procedural items, which are all on the agenda. The resolution in support of Northwest Ed Services, General Fund Operating Budget, the recognition and appreciation for retirees, teen pregnancy awareness resolution. And then we reviewed the agenda for tonight's meeting. We had a couple informational items. Ms. Connie Taylor reported that the district currently has thirty-nine TCAS retirees. A third of those retirees are teachers. They've been working on getting ahead of the hiring for open positions and have a great candidate pool. Once the mission-based budget talks have been completed, they will know where the vacancies will be. So TCAS is holding open interviews here in the administration building on Oak Street on May fourteenth from eight AM to ten AM and on June eighteenth from eight AM to ten AM. Then we had a communications update from Ms. Ginger Smith. And we talked about safe routes to school. So just to note that this discussion started in September of two thousand and twenty-three and that it's been a very long process. But Ms. Smith gave us an update on the Safe Routes to School Initiative. She shared that the school surveys have been completed. May twelfth through the sixteenth, volunteers will participate in walking and biking audits at Frankie Road and the Buffalo Trail in the mornings and the afternoons. And the next step will be a virtual meeting with the Safe Routes team, which includes MDOT, Garfield Township, offices, TCAS parent volunteers, and Dr. Van Wagner plans to give an update at the June ninth board meeting. So we will wait to get an update on that. And then our next executive committee meeting will be held on May twenty-ninth. Then we adjourned at five oh seven. Okay, next committee update, Sustainability Committee, which took place on April seventeenth, report out by Trustee Schmidt.
The Sustainability Committee has its first actual project, so we're doing stuff. You can see outside this building and at least Central Grade and Traverse Heights. So slow-mo May, formerly No-Mo May, creating awareness for pollinator habitat, thanks to the children's garden. So that's, that's exciting. We're also in the process of drafting our first ever climate action plan, thanks to Emily Umbreger, who's part Umbreger, who's the Director of Sustainability at Interlock and Center for the Arts. So there's a sub-team working on that, including the purpose, the vision, the mission of the, of this committee. Tim Pulliam from Keen Energy attended, talking about technologies, innovations around different energy systems, including what is possible or not possible at the new Central Grade remodel. So he encouraged us to do the math. I believe he's meeting with the architects so that they're, they're working on different systems versus, you know, fully electric to status quo or something in the middle. And then we formed another subcommittee, helping prep the schools to apply for our green school applications next year. And that's it. I believe we're meeting later this week, Thursday.
Perfect. Next item on the agenda is the MASV Spring Conference, which occurred May second through the fourth, and both Trustees Ballinger and, I'm sorry, I missed one. Sorry, I crossed it out before. So we'll back up one, the Superintendent Board of Education Student Advisory Council, which took place on April fifteenth, and that's a report out by Trustee Schmidt.
Yeah, this, this was, I've been to many meetings. This was my favorite meeting so far. I really enjoyed it. We had about twenty students from Central and West, nineteen of which were women, so there was one boy there, so I'm looking at maybe some of the boys to get involved next year. But we discussed course and program offerings, including the process and student perspective about what's available to TCAS students. And I'm not going to read the report. Somebody went out of their way and made a nice report. I hope that all of you get to read it because I do think it's invaluable information in considering as we step into strategic planning to make sure the student voice is centered with some of this decision-making. Because this, I mean, there is a question in the student survey in the strategic plan, about eighty-one percent feel elective classes help them prepare for the future, but this, this goes deeper. So I hope that that report can be shared because there's lots of things that these, the council wanted school board members to know. Just briefly, equity, access to support, improved counseling structures, student involvement in course communication, refining existing offerings. Not just adding more, but I, I just, it was really refreshing. These kids had a lot of awareness. They were aware that they, they were all college-bound. There was no career-bound kids. They knew that there was no career tech kids there, and I know we tried our best and we'll continue to try our best to try to get a diverse representation on this council next year, but I really enjoyed it. I hope I get to go again sometime.
Great. It is great to hear the kids, absolutely. Okay, now we'll move on to the MASV Spring Conference, report out by Trustee Ballinger and Schmidt.
Okay, so first of all, for starters, I should just let you all know, the setting was Mission Point Resort in Mackinac Island, May second to fourth. And I've been to a few of these spring institutes and I've seen as few as thirty people show up. This had almost three hundred people, so like in real estate, location, location, location. Anyway, I attended four sessions. There was a lot of overlap, consistent themes. So just my high-level takeaways, first class board leadership, a case study approach. This y'all would have gotten a kick out of because we broke into small groups. We had a case study on an athletic coach whose contract was recommended to not be renewed, but very controversial. A difficult board member and ten, posting the Ten Commandments in schools. So everybody discussed this in their small groups, shared, you know, you know, you know the usual strategy there. Second class was overseeing the superintendency, and sadly, we learned that the number one reason superintendents leave their jobs is the Board of Education. So very sobering information to learn.
And the, and the, and the average lifespan.
Yeah, that's coming. So one thing MASV, you know, advocates is getting a facilitator at evaluation time to help that conversation, take the pressure off the Board of Education President and ensure, ensure we're focusing on the right things, like our strategic plan, our mission, et cetera. And then third, the, the board self-evaluation, as some of you may know, MASV has a tool for boards to self-assess. Some districts do it every year with a facilitator and then maybe an alternate years just on their own. That might be something we want to consider down the road once our new members have, you know, gotten their feet under them. Third class was on board superintendent relations. Communication is key. That's the biggest thing. I raised my hand and gave some examples from our district, how you give us weekly updates. We have one-on-ones with you. Another district said they have two-on-ones, like small group meetings. So those are, you know, some best practices. And then my last class was actually a new one. This is a three, these were all three hundred level classes. It's called Empowering Education. The presenter there talked about how their research shows there is a very strong correlation between district leadership and student achievement, and district leadership is defined as a superintendent, the board, central office, and the principals. And this is where the average tenure of a superintendent in Michigan right now is only two and a half years. It was four years when I started, four or five years ago. So COVID really changed things and there probably is a demographic bulge as well. I don't know. But yeah, it's very sobering. There's a lack of institutional knowledge. And when you think about student achievement, every time you have turnover, it just slows down progress. So, uh, let's see, new, oh, also another point I thought was valuable for us to know because we recently approved some new curricula. It usually takes three to five years to yield results. And the presenter's message was stay on course, avoid flavor of the week or the month or the year. You know, just, you know, don't let great be the enemy of good. Also, what gets measured gets done, but don't have too many priorities. And culture eats strategy or structure for lunch. Culture really trumps everything else. You know, all the strategic plan and great curriculum and teaching, but if our culture is not supportive of our students and staff, then it's all for naught. Lastly, we just talked about policies to boost student achievement. So in the room and with the facilitator attendance, you know, is really being looked at nationally and in the state. Screen time, some districts raised their hand and said that their board is, and administration are now evaluating kids having the one-to-one laptops. Warren Consolidated Schools even said they're taking them away this next coming year. The presenter just said, yeah, you know, we've all gone to, the, the technology's gone this way and now the pendulum's swinging back a little bit. Just thinking more about, you know, being very intentional with, with teaching. So, oh, just lastly, I wanted to say, please save the dates. MASV has another quarterly institute in the summer. It'll be in Lansing next time at MASV headquarters, August fifteenth to sixteenth. These are always weekends. And then, of course, the big one is the Annual Leadership Conference, which will be in our backyard at the Grand Pevers Resort, October twenty-third to twenty-sixth.
Well, I mean, I, I attended five one-hundred level classes, which many of you have taken, so I'm not going to bore you with those. But I did attend a full-day AI workshop, which I thought was pretty interesting. And there, the one presenter was a self-professed Title One kid from Detroit, and he worked for Northville. And he pitched the equity imperative that AI can have, especially with our kids further some opportunity. And I, that, I'm very curious about that, especially with our English learners and our special needs kids. But I think we're doing a lot of things right. You know, he said before he started talking about technologies, make sure you're clearing your why and your purpose. And then I was just reviewing our AI guidelines. And if you look at our nine guiding principles, like, I feel pretty good about those. So, yeah, the key questions he thought school board members should ask was how does AI align with your strategic plan? How do we ensure equitable AI access? How will AI impact be measured? And how do we communicate about AI? So whenever the time is right, you know, as we enter this new strategic plan to think about AI, you know, he said it's here to stay. And to be crystal clear on, on our why, I also like the pillar he mentioned in Northville is like, does it make teachers' lives easier? And, and the answer has to be yes. So that was an interesting pillar. And it was a great conference and I, and I love learning and so that the summer series, but also for new board members, I'm looking at you two over there, that they also have a Lunch and Learn series. And there's actually one tomorrow, how to effectively collaborate with your superintendent, twelve, online.
Okay, well, thanks to the two of you for attending and, and the report out. I appreciate hearing about it. Okay, next agenda, our item is Board Office Hours. April twenty-fourth, report out by Beth, which was a, Beth Pack, which was an in-person meeting.
I had one person, Bill Weisner, who came. We had a discussion. We've had a very similar discussion before in Board Hours. And one of the things we did discuss was when you're talking to the board, no one board member really dictates the decision-making for the board. And so you're really looking at a group of people who come to some And so you're really looking at a group of people who come to some common consensus, some agreement before you begin to see any kind of change. And so that I, I think was something valuable to talk about. And the next board meeting will be virtual meeting with Scott Newman-Bale on May twenty-second.
And again, thanks for switching with me on that um, April twenty-fourth date. I'll, the link for switch to November, but I really do appreciate that. I had a-
Actually, I think it's August.
Or August, yeah, you're right, August, yeah, perfect. So I will be there, so again, I really appreciate that. Our next Board Office Hours is May twenty-second. And the attending member is Scott Newman-Bale, and that will be a virtual meeting. So again, just remember, we're trying to switch it up a little bit. Live um, meetings at the library. And then virtual meetings, just to see if we can accommodate more uh, for people's schedule.
We had talked about whether in time we'll change this. It'll be good to have Scott as part of that discussion. But I'm wondering, do we want to have people from the community say, actually, I'd like to have a meeting this month? And we could be prepared, but if we don't hear from the community, we basically don't have the, the Board Hours as a possibility. Although, you know, if, if Bill wants to meet with us one-on-one, you know, and, and go through the board, we can do that, we can continue doing that. But I'm thinking, you know, especially with, with things like some of the virtual meetings, there have been times when there's no one.
I think it, it just depends. I mean, I've had-
Just think-
Meetings where I have fifteen people show up and then I have, you know, somewhere just a couple and sometimes none. So I think maybe it's just, you know, it's ever on the community mind at the time or you know, different events or that kind of thing. So um, we can keep reevaluating and evaluating. I think, I think to wait and hear how some of the virtual meetings have gone, I think will be good. I haven't done a virtual meeting, so I don't know. But um, it'll be good to hear maybe some feedback after the May twenty-second virtual meeting, so.
Yeah, it's amazing how controversy will accelerate the participation in those office hours.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Certainly has at that point.
Yep, and also we moved the location from Horizon Books to Traverse area District Library.
Parking and-
And that, I think, makes it a little bit easier with the parking situation, so. Yeah, I'm kind of feeling keeping it. Because you just never know.
That's right.
Somebody could decide at the last minute.
Yeah.
I got nothing else to do, I'm gonna go talk to a board member.
Or it could be specific about their student or, yeah, and just if something comes up, so.
Cell phone was an issue that people that were interested in. And talking about some of the facilities, you know, when you're talking about equity across the two high schools, you know. So yeah, I understand that, but I think right now it's kind of a slow send.
Okay, uh, we will move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So many.
Just a second, okay. All those in favor and all those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item, and this is actually um, I, I meant to say this was coming up in our agenda, just talking about um, board committee updates and assignments. Having the report outs on sustainability, health and wellness. I think Dr. Van Wagner is looking for some clarity from the board. That are these committees specifically the sustainability as well as the wellness and nutrition? Are these district work committees or are these board committee? One uh, uh, board member brought up that um, M A S B said if more than one board member serves on a committee, it really needs to become a board committee. And we did away with some of our committees and consolidated. And so I think we just need to have a discussion, yeah.
It did give clarity, it's not that it can't, it's just being careful of not, you know, reaching a consensus then to another board member and some of that. I shared a, a session that he had went to with M A S B of, you know, kinda the open meetings and how that works in that element. So just, you know, to bring some clarity, you know, when we had started this down the road, to kinda go just historically, the Health and Wellness Committee originally had to have one member per USDA um, on it. And that has always been a district work group. When Beth came on the board, she actually asked to also be on and so the board, you know, said, that's fine. And then the health, the um, Sustainability Committee, you may remember, Holly actually just kinda said, you know, we had a student group that asked for something. So Holly kinda threw out there, hey, board, how about John and I do this? And that's kinda what, you know, all it was left. We did, you know, we had some conversation with Holly, you know, uh, before she had passed. And she had uh, sent an email um, that it said that, you know, with Scott. And Scott had thought it really was more of that district committee because there were only two board members versus three. So you know, the, the way that, I always kinda felt it was defined, if we had three board members, that was a board committee. But if there was one or two, it's really a district committee that, you know, a, a board member is just there as getting informational purposes only. Similar to when we have our, our Union Roundtable, where we have a rotating member. You know, and, and uh, and so I just am looking for that clarity to know because it, who sets the agenda? You know, all those kind of things are very different between the two. And right now, they're labeled as board committees online. You know, so I think, you know, it, however the decision is, whether that stays on or if that comes off for clarity for the, for the community, I think, you know, is important. So just looking for some clear direction there.
To be clear, you know, I, I fully, we have some amazing staff committees. And, and so I fully support health and nutrition, sustainability to become staff committees, just like climate and culture and behavioral and emotional support team, committees that are working directly on strategic goals. So, and, and, and I think I heard during exec to, to roll those up through our board committees. So say sustainability comes to finance and operations, uh, sustainability, uh-
Health and wellness.
Health and wellness comes to curriculum. Makes sense to me um, personally, you know, and then we don't need to report out on our staff committee. I still think, just because it's a staff committee, I mean, again, it's important work. And to be honest, I'd love to hear more reports. I'd love to see climate and culture come to curriculum because climate and culture is working on a diverse learning goal right now. Right, behavioral and emotional support team is working on three of our strategic goals. We get lots of reports from Misty and Best, but I don't, I haven't seen one from climate and culture as it relates to that diverse learning. So that's, that was my question, I like, cause it just, I'm new and it just seemed um, confusing to me.
I have a question about the M A S B slides that you shared. I didn't have the benefit of hearing what the instructor had to say. But I just said, I just caught that they said you can't have a quorum of board members on a committee.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know either. I just, I'm, I asked a question like, is this a public body? Yes or no? I don't know. That maybe somebody can provide guidance.
Well, and that's what even confused me a little bit in that document. It kinda alluded to if, if there were conversation amongst board members that went to another that informed the board like of a decision that it could be considered a violation of OMA. Like, I'd never seen that before. And so that's what kinda like, you know, maybe-
Yeah, me too, and, and-
Right, and that's, that's kinda how I took it.
I just asked a question, I didn't say this is how it should be. And it kinda makes me think about if, if we're gonna have board members on nutrition and sustainability, why don't we have board members on climate and culture and best? When those two committees are actually working directly on strategic planning goals. So personally, I'm fine with them all being staff committees, that we have regular monitoring, updates that come to committees, that then come to this body to hear the good work that's happening.
So when you say, just, just for clarification, when you say staff meeting, you don't mean a board member serving on that meeting group?
Correct.
Okay.
Keep it purely district, staff.
District, staff.
Okay.
You know, some, some of those committees have community members on them. And I will defer to whoever's chairing those staff committees to decide who gets to attend by invite those committees. Like Best has many community members. Sustainability has many community members, health and nutrition has many. So just because there's not a board member on there, doesn't, I mean, sometimes I wonder what I'm doing there, to be honest, you know. I mean, I try to provide some oversight and answer some questions, but I think there's other ways to be more efficient with um, how we work.
Yeah, I, I, I think, um, you know, I originally served on the he- health, it was not called health and wellbeing, but I was the original member because we needed, we had-
Nutrition at that time.
Yeah, we had to have a board member. So I served in that capacity until Beth came on and then wanted to join as well. And sometimes I felt the same way as to what am I doing there? Other than sometimes contributing as like a parent or, you know, different roles that we play. So um, what, what do the, what do you guys think? What do, what do the rest of you think? I mean, do you think we should continue to serve on the sustainability committee? And the health and wellbeing, or do you think we should?
I think it's maybe useful. And if somebody's interested in attending those meetings, that's fine. But you're serving as an ex officio board member, you're not in a voting role. So you're there for hearing, clarifying, answering questions, but you don't serve in an official capacity.
The other thing it does is it actually allows you to hear more from certain areas in the community. And sometimes then you speak up at a board meeting and you say, blah, 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 no mo mai or whatever. And I don't know if y'all even know what no mo mai is.
It's slow mo mai.
Slow mo mai, well, they don't want, they didn't, also, we're talking about don't mo.
Well, now it's slow.
Now it's do it slow.
Reduce.
Sounds like Sarah's been busy.
Yeah, of course, so.
So, you know, I think with the interest of um, how Central Grade gets revised, what happens with some of the information on that sustainability committee may be very useful to know. As we go along, as opposed to find out about it with expectations built. And yet perhaps the budget not being able to satisfy all the partners. You know, sometimes you can just have a little bit of input that says, you know, maybe we can't be so sure of that.
Don't you think that's the role of that Central Grade Committee? Those that were appointed to serve on that um, Central Grade Committee? I mean, well, sorry, are you looking for me to respond?
I was looking for you to respond.
Um, that, what we had set up was visioning committee, so that's dust.
Visioning, okay.
What we would move on to now is user group meetings. So we'd meet with technology and facilities and transportation, the staff, and really work through some of those specifics and present to board finance as we learn more.
So I think that one's kinda, it's not great for the conversation, that's kinda old.
Okay, okay.
You know, um, you know, I, I, this is what I'll tell you. I, I am comfortable, I think it makes more sense for one board member, to be honest with you. With this document that was shared, it does make me a little nervous if anybody ever said, wait a minute, this. And oh, wait, I, they talked to another board member, you know, could be looked at as, you know, uh, then, oh, wait a minute, then is it a board, like official board committee that has a meeting time and this and that, you know? So you think, I would ask the board if they feel that way, that maybe it makes sense just to have one as an ex officio, just there for listening, maybe, you know, clarification. You know, but staff would still run the meeting, plan the meeting, invite the members, all that from that standpoint. That, that's what my original thought and vision was for. And, and just, you know, with Holly passing, we got a little confused in that element and not, I clearly identified. And so I thought it was important to do that. So um, i- if the board is good with that kinda consensus, I'll let you guys figure out who shows up, you know, one of those two. And then I think, like Ty said, I think makes a lot of sense to me that they report up through the finance and curriculum committees. Or, you know, at some point, there could be another ad hoc that goes to exec, you know? But I think that's the way it should flow through, that, that's what makes sense.
I, I agree, and, and so I, yeah, I, I always wonder why on our report outs. So maybe Tammy will remove those going forward and we'll report, report up through the committee. Um, and then those, Ty, it's Ty and Josie, no, Ty and Beth on sustainability. And then, uh-
You're also on the health and, and wellness.
Okay, and Josie, are you on any of those?
I'm the alternate to sustainability. Is it both of you on right now? Okay, so one thing I was gonna say, um, I am, I'm also definitely on board with district taking ownership of these committees. In, in no way in my mind were, were they ever board committee meetings. But just getting back to the one or two board numbers question, I could certainly live with it only being one. But when I saw quorum, that made me think, okay, well, for any given finance, okay, Ty and Scott right now are two of the three members on finance. If they were on sustainability together, then that's a quorum of the finance. That would, that could be to your point, you know? Or Beth and I both be on curriculum. But if it's Ty and I, or Beth and Erica, or Beth and Scott, then you don't have that quorum issue. So then you still, still could keep it as two. But anyway, I did, I mean, nobody consulted Brad Van Assack at M A S B to get a hold of him.
Well, I have the conversation first. It is, and it still can, you know, that's what we don't have to decide. As long as we can have clarified, I think, the district committee part, I can call Brad and have a conversation and we can kinda update that for next month. Keep it as the same with board members right now. And then next month, if I get some glaring information, you know, that changes that or that Brad gives or at least clarification for those board members, we can, we can look at it again then.
And then, and having the report out to the committee, I think that would be nice, actually. And, and then the question would be, who would report out? Would it be the, it would be the district staff or the chair coming to the-
Which is maybe for sustainability.
Yeah.
You know, but for nutrition and wellness, Dan.
Yeah, okay, that's great.
I, I will say one thing, this is on behalf of those people who are attending those committees. Sometimes having board members even in the room will stifle conversation. And I would like to see a robust conversation where somebody can say something that they can't support or can support. I just want that conversation not to get stifled by having a board member sitting there. So I, I, it's just a word of warning, I guess.
We try to be fuzzy and warm.
I don't think we've stifled any conversation yet that I'm aware of. But, you know, maybe I'm just not that sensitive.
A little aware.
But I don't think I am.
Fair enough. I think I have the clarification we need. We're gonna go ahead, the website, then take those off of under the board section. And we'll make sure they're planned out from now on, these get lifted up to the committee, the board committee meetings.
Okay, perfect.
Here's, here's one more question. And that is, if another member of the community is very, very interested, then would they contact Dan or you?
What's that?
About a-
Yeah, I mean, we, we wanna try and control like our size and those elements and that. So, you know, we have generally, it's generally, it has an expertise, you know, in that area is what we try to when we have, if we have, you know, a community or a parent or something like that. And then a lot of times, maybe it's something that's clarified by state law of exactly what we have to have, so.
And I was, uh, when I was with health and wellness, we did have an application process for community members to apply to, to join. And that was, that decision was then made by the chairs. So I don't know if that still exists. But anyways, I, I think it's good to make it accessible to community members who are experts in their field, who bring something that will support T caps kids, a way to, to help us collaborate.
Right now, we're pretty robust with the communities, as far as people.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good discussion. Okay, moving on, uh, school safety update, Dr. Van Wagner.
Oh, didn't we have one more thing on the committees in terms of where-
I guess we have an appointment.
Sarah Bajeras.
We need to decide, we have an, oh, vacancy right now on curriculum committee.
Yeah.
And so we need to decide who's filling that.
Well, Ms. Bajeras, I would be pleased to have you on curriculum, if you would be so inclined.
Good on curriculum, considering, you know.
As a, a, a very recently retired educator.
Yeah, I would be happy to.
So it does not take, uh, Bush, it's really the president's purview. In, in absence of the president, the vice president's purview for committee assignments.
Okay.
So if you're good with the thoughts of the board with that, then just-
I'm good with that.
Thank you.
And our next committee meeting, uh, Josie, is one is curriculum?
That will be, um, let's see.
Monday, Tuesday, thank you.
Okay, and Josie did bring up that, right now we meet, curriculum meets at eight fifteen and they are talking about-
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty, we changed.
Oh, you just changed it to eight thirty, okay, I didn't know if that was off for discussion.
Tuesday, Tuesday, May twenty seventh.
Right after Memorial Day.
Yep.
At eight thirty AM here, yeah. And we can revisit that time if, or day of the week if that doesn't work for you.
Even if there's ever a time you can't attend, we always have a backup and you-
Let Jamie know, we'll find somebody for you.
And Ty Schmidt is currently our alternate.
Okay, yeah, great. Okay, so now we'll move on to our school safety update. Well, and welcome to curriculum there.
Okay, so uh, our assistant superintendent Christine Thomas Hill and our director of safety and security, Patrick McManus, recently participated in a national conference focused on advancing safety and security within the K twelve educational environment. The program provided comprehensive insights in critical areas, including the development and refinement of emergency operation plans, the implementation of effective behavioral threat assessment protocols, and the exploration of state-of-the-art technology and physical safety enhancements for school facilities. The knowledge and strategies gained through their attendance, which included interactive roundtable discussions, collaborative workshops, expert led- collaborative workshops, expert-led strategy sessions, and reflections from keynote speakers who experienced the aftermath of the tragedies at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School and Oxford High School, are expected to have a positive impact throughout T C A P's. This professional development will contribute to a more secure and prepared learning environment for students and staff, ultimately strengthening the district's capacity to ensure safety and wellbeing.
Okay. Okay, uh, next discussion item, a resolution in support of Northwest Education Services' general fund operating budget for twenty five, twenty six. So, yeah.
So I can basically explain, so by state law, we, our board has the ability to weigh in, I can't really say approve, but weigh in on the general fund of the intermediate school district, Northwest Education Services. So, you know, they also have, their larger fund is a special ed fund. And then they also have a current technical education fund. But we are not required or given really the opportunity on the, on the other two, just the general fund budget. But I can tell you that across the board, we've been pleased with what the collaboration and the work, you know, on the special ed side that we do, they do have a fund balance policy of sharing revenue that's been in place now for quite a few years. So I really see no issues with it and would recommend to the board that, the board recommend to the I S D support for their budget for the twenty five, twenty six year, their general fund budget.
Any discussion, any questions?
Well, without sounding like the historian for T C A P's, I have been through any number of meetings in the past where we didn't approve this. So it's not just a pro forma vote. There were some serious issues we had in the past with the allocations from the I S D. So I appreciate what they've done and that we're not debating this.
John, do you remember exactly, like, what's the percentage or approximate dollar amount we get from them every year?
For the special ed deal, Christine Thun. Yeah, and we can get that too. But again, it's not really a part of this tonight. But it's significant, I will tell you that, it is very significant.
I move that the Board of Education supports the Northwest Education Services General Fund operating budget for twenty twenty five, twenty six as presented.
Just a second. Tammy, please conduct a roll call vote. Uh, Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Bajeras?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
And Trustee Monlaw?
Yes.
I'm gonna read this real quick, this is a resolution for the community. A regular meeting of the Board of Education of Traverse City Area Public Schools District was held at the T C A P's Administration Building on May twelfth, twenty twenty five at six p.m. Members present, included all members except President Scott Newman Vail. The following preamble and resolution were offered by measure, by member, was it?
Schmidt.
Schmidt, and seconded by Ballinger. Whereas the board received the I S D General Fund operating budget on or before May first, twenty twenty five. And whereas, in accordance with M C L three eighty point six two four of their Vice School Code, the board must now adopt a resolution expressing its support or disapproval of the proposed I S D budget and must submit to the I S D Board any specific objections and proposed changes the board may have to the budget prior to June first, twenty twenty five. Therefore, it be resolved that the I S D General Fund budget for the twenty five, twenty six school year be supported and that the Secretary of the Board is hereby directed to submit a copy of this resolution to the Secretary of the I S D Board of Education, along with any specific objections and proposed changes to the budget. All right, thank you.
Now we vote.
No, you already voted.
Yeah.
You voted on it.
Oh, that's right.
I just voted after.
Yep, so motion carries. Okay, great, moving on. Recognition and appreciation for the twenty four, twenty five District Retirees Resolution. The next discussion item is the approval of a resolution and recognition for our retirees. And we're gonna have, well, I guess we'll read the resolution. Actually, is there discussion and then we'll read the resolution?
You can, you can do that, or you can pass it and then read the resolution, either way.
Okay, so is there any discussion items on this? I guess not, okay, is there, do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Tammy, please conduct a roll call vote. Trustee Hardy?
Aye.
Trustee Bajeras?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
And Trustee Monlaw? Yes, so now we will have Secretary Ballinger read the resolution.
Okay. And then there's also a list of our retirees this year, so that follows, right? You've not seen this ever. Okay, so the, the resolution of recognition and appreciation. Traverse City Area Public Schools has been fortunate to have a dedicated staff committed to the mission of the district. Several members of that staff are now about to embark on new adventures in life away from Traverse City Area Public Schools. Imagine that. Members of the T C A P's Board of Education wish to extend our utmost appreciation for the work that these staff members have done to make education an exciting and joyous experience for the students of our district. The Board of Education wishes to extend our sincere best wishes for every happiness in the future to those staff members who will be leaving the district at the end of the school year or prior to the end of the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five school year. The T C A P's Board of Education recognizes and appreciates the service of those employees departing the district and wishes them well in all future endeavors. And further, that this resolution of appreciation and support be duly recorded and reflected in the minutes of the T C A P's Board of Education meeting on this twelfth, twelfth day of the month of May in the year twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Okay, and now, yes, now we have the honor roll of twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five retirees. This is the largest number of retirees I've seen in my four and a half years on the board. We do have thirty nine retirees as of May first. So there may still be more by the end of the school year. But as of now, I will read this list and in alphabetical order by last name and their years of service and their most recent position and school building in which they worked. And I will just note, if I get choked up, this gets harder and harder for me every year with more and more teachers whom I recognize from my own kids having had them. So first is Michelle Anderson with twenty eight and a half years with T C A P's. Most recently, academic interventionist slash coach at Cortade Elementary School. Bonnie Bebel, twenty nine years, science teacher, West Middle School. Mary Bollinger, six years, biology and chemistry teacher, Central High School. Laura Boydston, two years, special education teacher, Silver Lake Elementary School. Michelle Brown, twenty seven years, elementary education teacher, Long Lake Elementary School. Karen Byrne, sixteen and a half years, special ed teacher, Traverse Heights Elementary School. Lori Carr, eighteen years, cook's assistant, West Woods Elementary School. Dean Counselor, eighteen years, bus mechanic, transportation and bus garage. Matt Dumont, twenty eight years, English teacher, West Senior High School. Michelle Iluo, nineteen years, lead administrative assistant, Silver Lake Elementary School. Linda Foot, formerly Melvin, thirty and a half years, elementary ed teacher, Long Lake Elementary School. Joe Forlanza, thirty one years, social studies and history teacher, Central High School. Chrissy Gaylord, nine years, toddler room assistant, T C A P's Montessori. Karen Gerlando, special ed teacher, Silver Lake and Willow Hill Elementary Schools, nineteen years. Rosalie Golden, thirty seven years, elementary ed teacher, Traverse Heights. Beth Havens, twenty two years, special ed teacher, West Woods Elementary School. Kathy Johnston, thirty two years, special ed teacher, West Middle School. Suzanne Caverly, twenty six years, elementary ed teacher, West Woods Elementary School. Dave Kenny, twenty six years, academic interventionist, Traverse Heights Elementary. Heidi Maltby Skodak, nine years, Executive Director of School Improvement and Innovative Programs, Glen Loomis Administration. Karen Mazurik, four years, preschool and extended day alternate district. Mike McAdams, sixteen years, master licensed plumber, T C A P's Facilities. Cara McConnell, thirty years, academic interventionist, Silver Lake Elementary. Carrie McCumber, twenty one years, accounting coordinator two, Glen Loomis Administration. Sarah McNamara, thirty years, English teacher, Central High School. Gina McPherson, twenty six years, preschool manager, West Woods Elementary. Katie Mettler, twenty six years, science teacher, West Middle School. Her husband, Matt Meddler, twenty six years, mathematics teacher, West Middle School. Deb Pritchard, thirty two years, H P E and athletic coach at West Senior High School. Dan Rice, thirty three years, social studies teacher, West Senior High. Cheryl Ridnor, twenty six years, elementary ed teacher, Cortade Elementary. Kristen Schoonover, twenty eight years, elementary ed teacher at Cortade Elementary. Kristen Souleki, social worker, West Woods Elementary. Jody Thompson, twenty five years, mathematics teacher, West Senior High. Teresa Wongaman, eleven years, academic interventionist, Long Lake Elementary. Mike Wilson, thirty two years, mathematics teacher, West Middle School. Jen Wolfert, thirty years, elementary ed and tag teacher, Central Grade School. Wendy Wolf Schlaff, thirty eight years, music and choral education teacher, West Middle School and Central High School. Deb Wyatt, twenty three years, elementary ed teacher at Silver Lake Elementary School. Last, that, that concludes our list as of May first. A lot of institutional knowledge there. So again, we really honor them and the decades of service that many of them have given to T C A P students. And there will be a retirement reception on Thursday, May twenty ninth from four thirty to six p.m. at the T C A P's Montessori School.
Thank you, and thank you to all those teachers.
I think we should just give them a round of applause.
Okay, uh, next agenda item, um, is the Teen Pregnancy Prevention and Awareness Proclamation Resolution. I'll start with Connie Taylor.
Yes, we bring it before you, we recommend the adoption. This is the Pregnancy Prevention and Awareness Month. And so we asked the board to consider the resolution in a certain sense promoting abstinence, but also support for students, as was indicated by our speaker earlier today, in the prevention and awareness of teenage pregnancy.
Discussion? Yes, is there a discussion?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. One is, we probably need to change, it says that the regular meeting of the Board of Education District was held at the Tompkins Board Administration Center.
Good catch.
Yeah.
So I think we probably need to touch that. And then there was an area, there were two areas, and I was going to suggest that we consider perhaps adding them. One of them is in the talk where, this is when my computer kind of went down. On, when the line caught fire underground, I guess. Okay, um, in this section, it's the fourth down, the fourth whereas down. And it, it ends currently with teen fathers have a twenty five to thirty percent lower probability of graduating high school than teen males who are not fathers. And then I found something through the working think tank. When they were looking at poverty, and they said that of people living in poverty, seventy nine percent did not graduate from high school and had a child and were perhaps married before the age of twenty. So that's additional information that supports it. In contrast, only eight percent of parents who finish high school and wait until after age twenty to marry before having a child are in poverty. And I think that that is important as we think about strategies dealing with some of our kids going forward. Then the other part that I would suggest making a little bit of an issue to is the very end on the now therefore let it be resolved. The last sentence to say that when pregnancies occur, to help support all involved for the best possible outcomes. So it's not just the teen pregnancy prevention, but once it happens, to also support those who are involved for good outcomes. And I think that some of this may be addressed to some point in our strategic plan. If we're looking at getting some of our test scores up and the group of kids that are kind of struggling in the middle on proficiencies.
I'm just confused where you're, what you're changing in that last paragraph.
The last paragraph.
Asking to change, I should say.
What I'm doing is just adding a sentence. So where it says implementing strategies to prevent teen pregnancy period, see where that is.
Yeah, yeah.
Then to add after that, when pregnancies occur, help support all involved for the best possible outcomes. So it's supporting the kids through involved with that pregnancy itself. And I think to a large extent, that is what's being done in generations ahead.
And I think it covers that in the sentence above. I mean, it says we call upon parents, educational institutions, businesses, nonprofits, healthcare, human services, government entities to join together in raising an awareness, empowering teen parents.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking more, I don't know what empowering teen parents means.
There is also a clause that says supporting parents in our community to ensure wellbeing success. Well, you know, I, I think, I, I appreciate that you looked into some more research related to, you know, connecting poverty to teen pregnancy. And I would just, I wonder if, if maybe you could give that information to Sarah Payette at Generations Ahead and could consider adding something to the resolution for next year? Just so it's not so messy tonight to try and do it in real.
One of the things that previously the board, this goes way back, this is about six years ago. Well, no, I take it back, five years ago, when Matt Anderson was on the board, is we did specifically list the sources in the document. So you can see at the bottom, the footnotes that do show the sources for that. So we would, we would want, we would want it, like, we'd need it right now, exactly the.
Oh, I've got the guy, it's William Gedstone is the one who did it. He worked in the Clinton administration, I guess several other presidents, and did studies on poverty.
I also think that we can't, or that we could pass this resolution. But if we decide that we want to revise the resolution, you know, in the near future or even, you know, wait till next year, whatever the board decides, we could do that as well.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, is maybe they'd want to do it for next year.
Resolution?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Okay, because, or we're gonna have to get the language right, and, you know, that can get messy on.
Right.
wording and that kind of thing. But totally open to hear what you have to say, I think it'll be easier to process as a board member, just in an email. And then maybe we could, you know, even bring it back up sooner than a year and say, we'd like to revise this and just approve it.
Yeah, I'd like it not to just be a proclamation, I'd like to be able to connect it. A little bit.
Do you have a preference for revising it before we pass it? Or passing it and then revising it for a later date?
Month will go pretty quickly, you know, so I kind of hate to wait till June. I, I would say pass it with consideration for some modification in the language to be discussed. Have a look at it. Have a look at it.
Okay.
Thanks.
For me?
Yeah, I'm Z, editing somebody else's resolution that we're on the agenda to approve or disapprove, depending on how the law goes. But I, I would rather not edit it on the fly here unless generations ahead maybe take it into account.
Okay, that's kind of how we did the one on alcohol.
Yeah, yeah, just so you can get it to us ahead of time, you know, so the board members can see it ahead of time to be able to look at.
Or get it to generations ahead.
And, well, generally, we'll contact Margie and have that conversation.
Any further discussion? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Teen Pregnancy Awareness Proclamation Resolution as presented.
Including the current incorrect address?
Yes, with that.
As revised?
As revised, with the correct, with the correct address.
Good catch.
I will second that. I will second that.
Uh, Tammy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Trustee Bajeras?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
And Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries. Uh, okay, next item on the agenda, the designation of, um, sorry. The designation of the district's electoral representative and first ballot candidate choice. I'm gonna reread that, sorry, uh, the next discussion item on the agenda is the board will consider a resolution designating the district's electoral representative. And first ballot candidate choice for the twenty-three biennial election of the Board Northwest Education Services. This election will be held on Monday, June second, twenty-twenty-five, is there a discussion?
So, what we need is, we need a person to be elected and a alternate in case something happens. Um, to be there, um, on that date, so whoever gets it, please make sure you're on your calendar ahead of time that you can go. An alternate, in case they can't, can you please also make sure you can go before we nominate anybody? A board member, yes, has to be there.
It's, it's June second at five-thirty, right?
Correct.
PM.
And this is over at the building?
At the ISD building, correct, and the, next to the Commons.
I can, I know I cannot, I know I cannot. So, Sarah, you probably cannot either because graduation's the day before.
Volunteer for it.
Scott, Beth, are you available, or Ty has a second?
I can do this as an alternate.
You can do as an alternate, so Scott Hardy is our, is our elector. And, and at this point, um, as you'll see in the resolution, there are three open seats and there are three candidates.
That makes it so.
Crazy goal.
Yes.
Perfect.
And they tried to have a representation across the five counties. And we have one representative in our area and there is one on the ballot, so.
Perfect, do I have a motion?
You know, we're too wants to read this. You wanna read it?
I don't.
Well, yeah, okay, I was gonna say because Scott is a, you know, not me and Beth.
She's going for it.
I move that the Board of Education does a resolution to designate trustee Hardy. Um, as this district's representative for the electoral body. Which will elect three candidates to the vacancies on the Board of Northwest Education Services, Michigan. On Monday, June second, two thousand twenty-five. And trustee Beth Pack as an alternate in the event the designated representative is unable to attend. The designated representative and alternative are further directed to cast a vote on the first ballot on behalf of this board. For Rachel, Bert Thompson and Rick Schmidt.
You second? Tammy, please conduct a roll call vote. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Bajeras?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Right.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
So we will, we will read this and then we do need to go back and just again, we don't have to procedurally, but we customarily do. Read also the resolution for the, the teen pregnancy as well.
Yeah.
So, we'll read this one.
Okay, I missed that.
You're good, no worries. So let's go ahead and read this, so I'll read, um, this one and then I'll let you read the other, so, um. Let's see, uh, at the May twelfth, uh, meeting of the Board of Education of Traverse City Area Public Schools. Uh, in the Glenn Lewis Administration Building within the boundaries of the district, um, on May twelfth. Uh, day twelfth, twelfth day of May twenty-twenty-five at seven-thirty, uh, PM. Uh, the meeting, actually, I'm sorry, at six PM, the meeting was called to order by Vice President Moonmore. Um, all of our members present except for Scott Newman-Bale. Um, the following preamble and resolution were offered by member Pack and supported by member?
Ballinger.
Ballinger. Whereas, the biennial election of the Board of the Northwest Education Services, Michigan, the ISD Board will be held on Monday, June second, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, and three ISD board seats will be filled by an election connected by an electoral body. Composed of one person designated by the Board of each of the constituent school districts. And in accordance with the revised school code six-one-four-two, MCL three-eighty dot six-one-four subsection two. This board desires to designate, uh, trustee Scott Hardy as its representative. Uh, and trustee Beth Pack as an alternate designated representative. In the event the designated representative is unable to attend and further desires to direct said representative. An alternate to vote on behalf of this board for a specific candidate or candidates. And the board previously considered this resolution at its public meeting on May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. Now therefore be resolved that the board does hereby approve the designation of, uh, trustee Scott Hardy as the representative of this board to the electoral body. Which, um, body will elect, uh, the three candidates to the vacancy of the ISD Board on Monday, June second, twenty-twenty-five. And Beth Pack as an alternate in the event the designated representative is unable to attend. The designated representative and alternate are further directed to cast a vote on at least the first ballot on behalf of this board. For Rachel Binji, Bert Thompson and Rick Schmidt, I believe it is. Um, the secretary of the board is hereby further directed to properly file a certified copy of this resolution with the ISD Board Secretary. All resolutions and parts of the resolution insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution are hereby rescinded.
Okay, thank you.
Very most needed.
Thanks. And then the resolution for?
Yes, the teen pregnancy, yes, or Traverse City Board of Education Resolution. Oh, sorry, I missed that, sorry.
All right, whereas the well-being and future success of our youth are paramount to the prosperity of our communities. And whereas teenage parents face unique challenges and responsibilities as they navigate, navigate the journey of parenthood. While still adolescents, and whereas between twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-two. There were one hundred and sixty-three births to teenage parents in our community. Defined as Grand Traverse, Leland and Betsy Counties, highlighting the urgent need for support and resources earmarked for this population. According to data from, and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, twenty-twenty-four. And whereas teenage parents are often unable to complete the education. Only half of teen mothers receive a high school diploma by age twenty-two. And teen fathers have a twenty-five to thirty percent lower probability of graduating high school than teen males who are not fathers. Which later results in unemployment, underemployment and dependence on public assistance. And whereas teenage mothers often seek prenatal care late and therefore can suffer increased health risks. And their babies are often born premature and with low birth weights. And whereas it is imperative to promote awareness and education about the consequences of teen pregnancy. Including its impact on the physical and mental health, educational attainment and socioeconomic outcomes. And whereas empowering adolescents with the knowledge, skills and resources to make informed decisions about their sexual health. And relationships is essential in preventing unintended pregnancies. And whereas fostering supportive environments that encourage open communication between adolescents and trusted adults. Including parents, guardians, educators and the community is crucial in addressing the root causes of teen pregnancy. And whereas supporting teen parents in our community is essential to ensuring the well-being and success of both the parents and their children. And whereas despite the challenges they may have, teen parents and have the potential to thrive. When provided with adequate support and opportunities. Now therefore be it resolved, the TCAP's Traverse City Area Public Schools of Grand Travers, Leland and Betsy Counties. Do hereby proclaim the month of May as Teen Pregnancy Prevention and Awareness Month. We call upon parents, educators, institutions, businesses, nonprofit organizations. Healthcare and human service organizations and governmental entities to join together in raising awareness, providing education. Empowering teen parents and implementing strategies to prevent teen pregnancy.
Great, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for reading and I apologize for missing that the first time around. Um, okay, moving on to the next agenda item, strategic planning number two.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to kick this off, um, a couple of things, you know. We, we had our strategic planning session number one on, um, April twenty-eighth. And, um, I think, you know, from what I have, um, heard from a few trustees. And I did, um, watch the recording of the executive committee meeting last week, from last, uh, excuse me, like ten days ago. Um, there was a suggestion there that the board gets an overview of the current strategic plan, implementation status. Um, basically to just bring everybody up to speed, older and newer board members on the current status of the, the twelve strategic goals. Um, the extent to which they have been implemented, successes to date, challenges and gaps that remain. To give us some kind of background before we launch into the next strategic plan. Obviously, that wasn't part of our first session with Dr. Segleric, um, and so that was something that. Um, it, it sounded like different trustees were interested in. Before we even get to that, um, strategic planning session number two on June sixteenth. And so one, uh, probably the most obvious opportunity would be our regular board meeting on June ninth, the week before the strategic planning session. So that, that was one thing, um, and then secondly, there's been some discussion about how. We did not expressly go over the mission value, vision and values of the current strategic plan. And whether we want to just auto-renew the, that, or if anybody felt like they needed to wordsmith it or add to it. So just to give some feedback to Dr. Segleric that we'd like to tee that up for this, the second strategic planning session. Um, and then thirdly, I know that there was conversation in executive about the performance metrics that were proposed. By Jesse Houghton and Dan Tyesworth and Dr. Van Wagoner, um, on academic achievement. Um, you know, standardized test scores we could look at. And I just wanted to revisit that quickly, if we can reach a consensus quickly, since this is our only opportunity. Because to me, it seemed like digging into those performance measures before we've identified the, the new goals for the next strategic plan. Seemed, um, to be out of order, like digging into those details. So I would probably suggest that we do those later, but, so those are the three issues that I have heard others raise. And I thought about myself and discussed briefly with the superintendent. So, anybody else wanna chime in?
So, per practice of the past, whenever we've had two or more members want something on an agenda. So we have not done agenda planning for our June board meeting yet.
Right.
So I've had at least two, I know Scott's mentioned that, so per Scott's kind of policy he's done. I will put that on for consideration on the executive committee for the June board meeting. So that can kind of, per his policy that he's had or practice, I should say. I, I will go ahead and just add that one, so we can take that one if you want.
The first issue, the overview.
So then, the next two are a little bit different.
Yeah, just to be clear, we have a consensus though that that's what everybody.
Well, the only thing I said, I think I said at the executive, was that, uh, there's. I, I don't care when the baseline gets defined as to what progress we've made. It could be at the strategic planning session itself if we want to. There's some value to that because there's a recency effect, so at least you're dealing with information that you're not going to see how you can. Create or improve with new goals, I, I just, for Sarah and myself and Ty, I, I have a hard time. Trying to determine what the goal is going to be without knowing what the starting point is. And I'm not debating any of the goals from the previous strategic plan, I just wanna know where we're at, so I know where we need to get.
Yeah, and maybe we messed up and didn't let Nick know that, and that's, and that's fine. And that's like, I don't even know if it needs to be in June, it just needs to be before the next strategic plan, and I think that's all.
And so, uh, you know, so let me back up what I just said then. I'm not sure I do have consensus now on when, so basically, you guys just need to tell me, uh, it sounds like you want it. But I do need some consensus of when you want it.
Well, before we get into the weeds of the second study session, right?
Which our next opportunity would be then our next board meeting.
And I think like all this is meant to be, just because we've never had a discussion about the process or the steps and, like, what did we learn? What, what went well, what didn't? I mean, I, I came home from that study session, I felt like, like this, the, the perception surveys are, is great data, but as we follow the data. There's so much, right? And, um, and I just wanna make sure.
And happy to do it, like, you just, you tell me when.
And that's it, it doesn't really matter when, as long as before.
Yeah, I think we're good, I think that, what I'm hearing consensus is that, yes, at our next June board meeting.
Okay, so, back up, I will add it to the agenda for executive committee to consider.
And I've got it in my notes too, for board exec, so, um, we'll add that.
Okay.
Um, so that's one item, second item, I mean, uh, Jesse and Dan on presenting achievement measurable. We're gonna go over that at the start of our strategic plan, in your opinion, do you think it would fit good there? Or do you think we should push that out a little bit until we have some set goals?
Well, I think there's a bit of an argument for both, I mean, I, I think because we did, we went quite a bit into it with that first study session. I feel like we're ready to close the loop on, on what those look like, I think we're going to. If you really analyze it, I think going through the goal first and attaching it to one of those goals. We're all sure there will be an academic achievement goal. So it's, you know, it's depending what order you'd like to go in, but I feel like, again, if we wouldn't have done the study session. I think we'd be a little more behind it, we'd have to for sure do the goal first, but Jesse and I have worked together on this, we've worked with our curriculum team. We've worked with the administration team and all the principals, we've discussed it in joint principles. So regardless of the direction, and, and if it's a timing thing, we can go either way, but logistically, it's, it's kind of up to.
And I for one appreciate this, and I, I mean, when I saw this, I, I got excited. And I also talked about the, the continuous improvement goals around academic achievement, around whole student support, around school systems and. Um, so did Scott was, does that answer my question? Yes, like I do, I wasn't really asking about, I asked about three things, the, the goals around behavior, right? I mean, I'd like to know how we're doing on behavior, I mean, are we doing well or not well? I don't know, you know, will we build on that goal and, and the new plan? I don't know, I also was wondering about enrollment, that got, Jesse brought that up at the meeting. And will that be a goal and how are we doing and what starters have we, have we taken there? So, um, I, I'm, I don't, it doesn't really matter to me when it happens. But it just seems we missed a few steps and that's probably our bad for not relaying that to Nick, I guess.
Well, I, I, I will say this, if we're gonna get into strategic planning and trying to establish new goals. I definitely need to know where we're starting from. I can't establish the new goal and then retroactively go back and figure, oh, we're not even close to that, so maybe that goal needs to be amended. Right? That's my only point, I'm not looking for copious information about each and every one, I just wanna know the starting point.
Well, each and every one is twelve, you know, and, and the other thing that got brought up is let's have nine or twelve goals. And that's where like, we haven't even provided input, because I would love to see five goals, I think, I think it personally. But you know, when, when all of a sudden it felt like we're going down the river with things already kind of been decided and I'm like. And maybe it was coming next with all the, the other data around enrollment, around behavior, around bullying, you know. Because those, that will provide the baseline. And I guess, I, I'd just like to see that bef- before we start making new goals.
Well, and I guess that I'd just encourage all the board members on your one-on-one with John to have those conversations of things. Like maybe you could have the conversations with Nick that maybe we've missed and.
Yeah, but I still think right now, we still have some unfinished kind of resolution, so basically, A is, in, in that committee, we talked about. Jesse and Dan and myself doing some baseline, you know, and, and just need clarity here on exactly what, but I think we just heard what. These ties thoughts on what, um, do we do that? You know, do we do that like the first hour of the study session? Or do you think you get to broader goal of academic achievement that comes out of it? And then afterwards, like in a, in a follow-up board meeting or study session? Or maybe the board feels we need another study part of the strategic plan to present all of that stuff. As subcomponents that you guys can evaluate, that you, you can, you know, you go either way. And so I just, you know, I just want clarity for us is, do you want a presentation that hour bef- in front? You know, or do you wanna try and set, set loft the big goals and then bring sub-goals under it? At a later point that we would bring to you after, it's your choice.
I'm okay with how it was originally set up, so, but the hour before presenting on those achievement goals, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that, I think there's a recency effect that would be very valuable. But I, we were trying not to extend this future planning into the next morning, so.
But we, we said we would take.
We, we said we would take that first hour from five to six and, and do that, and then six to whatever would, yeah, would be.
I just want to clear, do that means update on where we are with our goals?
No, so the goals would be, like what was just said, we'll be at our board meeting, our regular June board meeting. And the first hour then would be Jesse and, so, so you guys were provided their thoughts on some specific possibilities on that?
Can I ask for a similar memo around whole student support? Like a recommendation from our chief academic officers, and maybe some recommendation, a similar memo around school systems?
So.
So you want like a memo around each of the, my KIP, the school improvement goals?
Personally, I would.
Yeah, see, and that's where I differ, because with a strategic plan, first you have to identify your, your strategic goals. And then you later, you later dig into, you develop the objectives that support those goals, and then further the performance measures or metrics that under, that is how the district will measure success. And so, to me, I feel like I want to preserve the three hours that we have with Nick Segleric on June 16th for that strategic planning session number two, to make sure we get through identifying the goals and revisit the mission, vision and values. And then if we have time at the end of that three hours, then we could dig further. But I don't want to jeopardize running out of time, and then we rush it, or we necessitate a third meeting. I, I think it'd be better if we as a board talked about the, the objectives and your performance metrics at a later date once we set the, the academic goals and the other goals. Because like Ty says, there's going to be performance measures and objectives supporting other strategic goals as well.
Beth, what do you think? Sarah, Sarah, you're kind of throwing you into this, but what are, what are the rest of you guys thinking?
I think that we've had a lot of goals in that strategic plan. And I'd like to see us draw them to a, a closure, if you will. And from that, then you bridge into, and it may very well be that parts that you don't complete, you say, well, we can't do that, because we need to do this other thing first. But until you get more definition on where we are with those 12, and I think it goes back to John and, and Jesse and Dan's presentation on, this is where we are with these guys, those were huge. It was almost like you wanted to change the world, right? The cause. And was that realistic? And to not meet them is not the end of the world either, you know?
So you're going to get that, you're going to get that at the June board meeting?
And do that, and then.
The question is next.
Next.
Do you feel you need a review of all of the academic, and Ty has now mentioned a couple of other areas? Do you need that, then go into the strategic planning goal setting? Or do you do the goals than that? I think it's just philosophical here, which ones, what comes first?
The other thing is, we've gotten a lot of some of that information over the course of the curriculum committees. You know, and so if you spend time, and that is what I'm going to do on the next weekend, is just lay out, I love paper, I'm sorry, but I can sort it so much better, you know, and tie things together, so to speak. We did a lot on discipline in the curriculum committee, and it's there on tape in that, that little thing called the computer. And so we just kind of have to really focus on, if we do academic goals as the big thing, then do these other things, are we looking at them as to how they actually connect to support academic success? You know, it's sort of like, how do we weave things, not just have all these independent things?
So for, just for clarification purposes, are you in favor of Jesse and Dan presenting the hour before strategic plan on achievement?
I'm doing what, we're doing what we're doing with the overall current plan.
Yes.
At our June board meeting.
Right, that's decided.
The question is, after that, at our strategic plan study session, do you want a first hour of review of, of academic, the, the things that they have already identified? That, you know, some things Ty has mentioned here? Or, so I think what's also being proposed is, no, to figure out what your big arching ones are, and then come after with our team bringing thoughts and suggestions on that next level at, you know, a month later or two months later, and then the board approve that as a whole. It's, it's just which one you want.
Actually, I'd also like to see the data, you know, they showed us a lot of graphs and charts. I'd like to see that one more time. Because I think that somehow, you know, we, we were talking about things that aren't in the data, because I don't think the questions were asked.
Fair enough.
And yet, those things may be real important to looking at, although we don't have data from the surveys that have been done. Does that make sense?
But we have other data, and I think that's the point here. Is do you want those other things in that first hour, or do you see it after the fact?
But it's a lot to order in the first hour. Do you want to lose?
My request was pretty simple, you've got 12 goals, I just want to know what progress, where we're at with the goals.
But that's separate, that's going to happen.
Right, that's all I can do.
That's done, that's, that's put to bed, that's happening in our regular June board meeting.
Yeah, we're only talking about the hour before.
First hour, is what I was suggesting.
So we've decided that's going to be at the board meeting, so now in the first hour.
We give some guidance at the board meeting, after how that goes with the data on the study session.
And if I can find some stuff, Ty, I'll tell you where.
So help me out with what you mean by that. So the, this one will be bringing just the, the current strategic plan and where we're at.
Where we're at, what we learned.
And so right now, that's all that's planned.
Right.
So, you know, and so the quest, so what you're saying is, bring that to you, and then at the next board meeting, decide? My only caveat to that is we don't have much time then, and we've got to let Nick know what's going to happen at that. We're just, you're only days away from the, the study session for strategic planning. That's the only issue I have with that. But I'd rather, if you guys want it, I'd rather know it now, so that our team can prepare, or we walk into it without that and then bring it to you at a, at a point, a month or two, as subgoals as, as our team identifies, and you can slice and dice them, like them not, nope, come back with different things afterwards. Again, we're happy to do either or. I just need clarity on what that is.
Well, and one question I, is, has, has Dr. Segleric shared with you a draft agenda for this next?
No.
Because, you know, I mean, I know what it was like last time, but this is more expedited.
I, I think we're asking to go back and say, I'm going to have to have a conversation with them about probably differently than they're thinking right now. And I will tell you, you know, based on this, they may go, okay, we may need a third then. But if so, I think by, by listening to what Beth said at the board, the board would rather get it right, and so be it if there's a third, there is. But, and if we can finish it, great.
Right.
But, you know, like, we're happy to do either or, I just need consensus clarity from the board so that Dan, Jesse and I know what we're bringing to you and when.
So in summary, I'm going to go ahead and say that what I'm hearing is, for our June board meeting, we will have an update as to what, what.
Our current strategic plan.
With our current strategic plan. And then we will utilize the hour before our next strategic plan meeting to have an update from Jesse and Dan regarding achievement measurement, and what that might look like.
Well, that's the cart before the horse that, that Josie was talking about.
Okay, but we, I've, I've gotten consensus though, that we've decided to go ahead with the hour.
I don't know that, I don't know that, but we'll see.
Yeah, that's, that's the part, I, do we want, I, I'm, I mean, I'm open to what the majority wants. It's just, do we want to zoom in before we zoom out and?
The only reason we're zooming in, because if you look at the current strategic plan, there's nothing around proficiency. So even though we list M-step, PSAT, SAT, when we give, when we get the report on, in June, there'll be nothing on achievement or proficiency. So I think the rest of it, we will get updates on, everything from enrollment to behavior to bullying to mental health. So I think the only thing left, I believe, is like the memo around, and I, I have, I did the sheet. So it, it could take 15 minutes to, here's where we are with third grade reading, here's where we are with eighth grade math, here's our graduation rates.
But then that's assuming that proficiency, for T-CAPS, is all going to be measured by standardized testing.
Kids, we're going to wrap, we're going to let you guys get out of here in like five minutes. So it's almost eight o'clock, just so you know that.
That's true.
We're going to wrap this up for you guys in like five minutes.
Yeah.
Right now, I just want to say like, our, our 1A goal around student achievement, the data supporting that, if you look at our, if you look at it, it lists M-step and, and PSAT. So, I mean, I just.
But I think Ty, we're, we're, we're different, so I think there's probably already consensus that that'll be overarching. Now, we would come back after with very specifics of what we would want under that goal, is what Josie's proposing. I think, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think you are, are okay, as long as it's identified that is one of the key goals overarching that comes out of the strategic plan.
I mean, I'm just one guy, but yes.
I get it, but I'm just saying from your perspective, right now, then could come back after. And I, I think from past conversations, I don't think I have a board member that would disagree with that. Is there anybody that would disagree with that thought?
No, but I think it's part of the conversation we're going to have in the two-hour block, where we talk about new goals and the strategic plan. I mean, I, it may be well warranted, but I think we need to have the conversation, because it's not one of the goals right now.
And I also don't think that what Jesse and Dan are going to lay out are going to be, like, we're not going, it's the cart before the horse would be if we took a goal and then said, this is how we're going to measure it. I think they're going to kind of outline how we could measure some options and how we could incorporate achievement measurements into our goals.
And we might bring it, and you may go, don't like it, come back to the drawing board, and that's okay.
That's fine.
And it could very well be that what we want isn't out there.
Or can't be measured.
Exactly, bingo. But then we have to refine it, and generally, there's a way to do it.
So, so to be clear, June 16th then at five, did we have the strategic planning session number two from five to eight? We would demarcate that first hour for Jesse and Dan to present something that would bridge what's presented on the current strategic plan, June 9th, before we launch into?
No.
June 16th.
We wouldn't bridge anything, we would actually give you specifics, you know, of, you know, they've already sent the board kind of their thoughts of, of metrics and that element. I think, you know, I, I think right now, Jesse and Dan give me a nod, I think you kind of know what Ty said that he's thinking, wanting. So we could, we, you know, so we could give you that? Or if you think that you just want to go through the process, and right now you're saying, I think you could ordain right now, that's going to be one of our goals? And then you could ask after, during that session, at the end of it, John, please have the team, and you, as you come back another month later with how you're sub, putting specifics to that goal, and present that to the board for the board to think it meets the mark or not? I'm seeing heads to that. Ty, good with that thought? Beth, good with that thought?
Oh, yeah, we'll watch and play.
Good? Scott, live with that? Sarah?
Yep.
Okay, so what we're going to do right now, we are not going to plan on that session. We're just going to go, we'll start with mission, vision and values. We'll look at, at where we're at with that. We'll go through that process as Nick has planned, from there to identify specific goals. One we already are saving is going to be around student achievement, especially with closing the achievement gap with our, you know, our, our subgroups, especially economically disadvantaged. There will be others, and then after that, the, the board reaches those. Our team at another point after that will bring back those subgoals that are measurables for the items the board identifies.
And if we're starting at five and we get done at seven, we have that last hour still.
You're, you're being hopeful to us.
I am. That was another reason why I didn't want it that first hour, in Jeff's eyes.
I think I have my clarity.
Okay.
Jesse, Dan, some clarity?
It's going to be so good, you guys.
Okay.
Excellent.
So, at, at this time, we're going to take a quick little minute before we go to our public, public comment number two. Any kid can go to any board member, it has to be a board member to sign your sheets. Thank you for your patience. Back in session, thank you for all your patience there. We'll move on to our public comment number two. The board is set aside this time for public comment. Individuals addressing the board shall have the opportunity to speak during public comment and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should, should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system. We strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 2504. Tammy?
Lily Glidden?
All right.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. We're glad you're, you're doing it.
In this video and say it live.
Good evening, everyone. So the board, my name is Lily, and I'm here today to discuss the strong score of continued increase funding for career tech and college education programs. These programs are not just elective, they are essential pathways to real life skills. They're worth it, whether it's in healthcare, welding, automotive, culinary arts, or allied health, micro tech learning. Career Tech helps students discover purpose, build confidence, and graduate with employable skills. I've seen firsthand how CTC programs can transform students, some who struggle in traditional classrooms, by giving them a hands-on, meaningful learning experience. They walk out of the programs just not, not just with credits, but with certifications and experience, one that I have benefited from as well. Every dollar invested in Career Tech pays off through higher student admissions, happier students, more learning opportunities, and more important, and more importantly, meaningful memories. It gives students the opportunity to make mistakes, learn from them, fix them, and have fun doing it. I thank the board for protecting and expanding funding for career and technical education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Good job. Yeah.
Have a good night.
That was great, you too.
Good point.
Yes, all right, well, thank you, everyone, thank you for bearing with me. I don't normally serve in this role, leading our board meetings, so I appreciate just, you know, helping me through some of those mistakes. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting adjourned. Our next board meeting will be Monday, June 9th at 6:00 PM in this room. Thank you.